Dean, it's six o'clock, so I would appreciate if you could take your seat. Forty-six. Yes, we do. I've limited two minutes. I wouldn't limit the number of speakers. Seventeen.
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
James, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So these are supposed to be sub.
They are.
So which ones are we?
Swan Creek first.
Okay. And do I see, I don't see anything in that says that.
So it's not a public statement, but the public appearances are separated between the two.
Okay.
So that's it.
Okay. Yes, okay, thank you.
And they already know that we signed it.
Okay. Okay, it looks like people are just going to be standing. Why we have this consent? There are a few seats up here if people want to take a seat. Okay, well, we will call the meeting to order. This is the regular Board of Education meeting for February 25th. And the first item of business is the resuscitation of the vision statement. Every school will be a thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community-ready. Next item on the agenda are public appearances. And as a notice for this meeting, the first public appearances will be with regards to the proposed Swan Creek petition. And after that, we will have general public appearances. So for those who have not been here in the last few months, we want to thank you and everyone for coming to speak tonight. And as you recall, we have made some improvements to boardroom protocols to ensure the meeting runs smoothly. Thank you for signing up in the front hall. Thank you for helping us keep our aisles clear to ensure safety. And thank you for helping us ensure that every speaker has an opportunity to make their comments. We also want to remind you that because of clear feedback regarding mispronunciation of names, and we apologize for any time that this has happened in the past, we are using a new system whereby each speaker can introduce themselves. Speakers are welcome to speak on any topic at a regular board meeting, but we would like the speakers in the audience to know that board action and conversation is limited to the items on our agenda, which means members of the board will not be able to engage in conversation with speakers. We are here to listen carefully. We'll take your comments into account in our decision-making and follow up with you where appropriate. Each speaker is given up to three minutes to speak. You must be registered to speak and cannot give your remaining time to someone else. The lighting system will turn yellow and then red so that you know when it is time to wrap up. If you've gone over your time, I will ask you to immediately wrap up your comments. Speakers who require language interpretation support in order to speak to the board will be given up to six minutes to speak, which should generally provide sufficient time for the interpreter to convey the speaker's message. Individuals with disabilities who require accommodations in order to speak, to register and speak to the board will be granted such accommodation upon request. Other extensions may be granted only by the approval of the board. Thank you again for participating in our meeting tonight. Tonight, we have forty-six speakers signed up for public comment. We will start with speaker one. Speaker two, please make your way down either aisle and towards the front and wait by the stairs to be ready for your turn to speak. And please be sure to introduce yourselves. Okay, first speaker.
Good evening. My name is Erica Hosgalo. And I am a mother of a fifth grader at Leopold Elementary School. And I'm also a resident of the Swan Creek neighborhood in Pittsburgh. Tonight, I'm sharing my opposition to the petition seeking detachment of Swan Creek from the Madison Metropolitan School District. When we relocated to Madison from Chicago, we intentionally looked for housing in the MMSD. The MMSD was extremely valuable to us both as a place offering very unique programming, such as a dual-language immersion program, but also offering a diversity that we felt didn't reflect what we wanted our daughter and our community to reflect. We don't have those opportunities at the Oregon School District. And as we've not been presented with a petition in our neighborhood, there's been no public meetings. So I don't know exactly what they are petitioning and all of the rationale that they've been provided. But I don't think that this petition reflects the majority of the residents. And I request that you reject this petition. And I want to thank you for your time, especially in light of all the other very important matters tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you can raise the microphone.
Better? Okay, good evening. My name is Joel Turner. I'm a current resident of Swan Creek, and I oppose a petition to detach from MMSD. Before you tonight is a petition signed by many residents of Swan Creek that requests that our neighborhood become part of the Oregon School District. I ask that the board not be persuaded by the number of signatures on the petition. The signing campaign led by petition organizers over a two-and-a-half-month period last summer was based on misinformation as how to the origin of how Swan Creek became part of MMSD, promises of students being grandfathered into MMSD post-detachment, and the lure of higher property values. While it's true that a number of households do open and enroll out of district, a majority still attend Madison schools. We moved to Swan Creek in 2013 with a full knowledge that we were zoned for the Madison School District, not Oregon. Every property owner here tonight made the same decision when they purchased a home in Swan Creek. My son plans to attend West High School along with many of his friends in fall 2021. Our reorganization takes that away, that option away from us, and forces us either to move or to open and roll to Madison with no guarantee that enrollment in West will still be available to us. The history of how Swan Creek became part of MMSD is well documented in the public record. In October 2002, Swan Creek, at the time a development property with no registered homeowners, was transferred by Oregon to Madison as a result of a boundary agreement negotiated between the districts over a two-year period. An appeal was filed in March 2003 by the developer. At the appeal, which was affirmed, Oregon officials testified that they lacked the capacity to accommodate us. That is still true today, and that it is in their best interest to have Swan Creek attached to Madison. Another petition in 2006 brought by property owners was denied by both school boards. I also draw your attention to the boundary agreement itself that clearly states that attempts by third parties to alter the current boundary must be discouraged and, if necessary, opposed. The Oregon School Board has already indicated by email to some of us that tonight they will deny the petition, and I urge you to do the same. Doing so will send a clear message that Swan Creek will remain in Madison School District for now and the foreseeable future. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your continued service to our children and the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. The third speaker. And if the fourth speaker could come down the aisle and be ready to speak next.
Sorry for the delay. Thank you for serving on the school board. My name is Sarah, and I am in favor of the Swan Creek petition. I own in Swan Creek. My kids swim in Oregon. My kids go attend lots of sports in the Oregon School District. And we just want to be a part of their community more. We are physically surrounded by Oregon School District. And the land you see to the north on a map is actually DNR land that might look like Madison School District, but it's all DNR land that won't be built on and that will not have Madison School kids going to your schools. So we were just hoping we could be more part of their community and be accepted to their school district. So if you could please let us be released from the Madison School District and be added to the Oregon School District. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth speaker, and if the fifth speaker could make their way down.
Good evening. My name is Christina DiMatteo. I've been in Swan Creek for about ten years now. I have two sons that open and roll to Oregon School District. Yep, and I am in support of the petition. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The fifth speaker, and if the sixth speaker could make their way down. Okay, sixth speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Dawn Clement, and I am a resident of the Swan Creek neighborhood. And I'm here to support the petition to be released from the Madison School District and be entered into the Oregon School District. I currently am a teacher in the Oregon School District. My children attend the Oregon School District. Many of the students that I currently teach are from Swan Creek and are open and rolled to the Oregon School District. There are a lot of kids in our neighborhood who do choose to open and roll just based on boundaries that we're really close to the schools there. And with the new school that the school district has already passed a referendum to build, will be right next to our neighborhood. It just makes more sense geographically that we're part of the Oregon School District. And although I do value the MMSD, I do think that it just makes more sense for our kids to all be closer to the school district in which they, their boundaries are closest to. So I would appreciate your support in this petition and letting go of our neighborhood and allowing us to be part of Oregon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Amy DeWald, and I'm here, I oppose the petition to detach Swan Creek from the Madison School District. I acknowledge that the city of Pittsburgh is complicated with students being split between three school districts. And when living on the edge of any school district boundary, there will always be a point where one side of a road is assigned to one school district and the other side to another. Any discussion about how the neighborhoods alongside Swan Creek are already assigned to the Oregon School District is a futile argument for this very reason. Despite the petitioner's claims that Swan Creek is an island, it does still meet the MMSD border at the northeast corner of the neighborhood. The construction of a new elementary school in the Oregon School District is part of what is fueling this petition. But I would like to point out that this new elementary school will be about a mile and a half away from the edge of the Swan Creek neighborhood. It's difficult to get a precise measurement at this point since neither the roads nor the school are actually constructed yet. This may be about a mile closer to Swan Creek than Leopold Elementary School is, but it will be across Sine Road, US Highway 14, and County Highway MM. Certainly not a school that is in a neighborhood that is adjacent to Swan Creek. The drive time from Swan Creek to Leopold or from Swan Creek to the new Oregon Elementary School will be fairly equal at five to seven minutes. The Swan Creek neighborhood is a small community nestled behind DNR land and undeveloped green space, which separates the neighborhood from the traffic and nearby business district of Fish Hattery Road, while also being connected to a school district that is rich with diversity and opportunity in the metropolitan environment of Madison. As the land in the Swan Creek neighborhood has been developed over the past sixteen years, every resident that has purchased a home in Swan Creek has knowingly chosen a home that is in MMSD. Yet some are putting forth this petition to say that they are unhappy with what they chose. There are homeowners like myself who have chosen to live in Swan Creek and remain in Swan Creek for its connection to MMSD and not in spite of it. I want my property tax dollars to continue to support MMSD, and I want to continue to be able to actively participate in the election of the MMSD school board members. You've heard testimony from the past from supporters of this petition say that Swan Creek children deserve to go to the same neighborhood school as all of their friends. I agree wholeheartedly, but what they're failing to acknowledge is that all Swan Creek children already have the opportunity to go to school together. Some families have chosen not to include their children in this neighborhood school environment. This is their prerogative, but to claim that they are unfairly burdened by their own choice is wrong. I acknowledge that there are difficult experiences for some students in MMSD. And for that reason, we all, as parents, teachers, community members, educators, and school board members, need to remain vigilant and prepared to make appropriate necessary improvements and changes in our schools. I am happy to send my children to our neighborhood schools in MMSD. I welcome and value the diversity in language, socioeconomic class, and culture that my children experience every day. I applaud MMSD's foresight in establishing a rich dual-language immersion program that extends from kindergarten through 12th grade to prepare students for life and work in a global and multicultural society. And I worry about the very real potential to exacerbate racial and socioeconomic disparities at Leopold specifically if the detachment is approved. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. The sixth speaker. Actually, I think it's Dawn. Dawn, are you? Okay.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Heidi Lubinow. I'm a parent, volunteer, substitute teacher, property owner in Swan Creek, and supporter of our MMSD schools. My family and I are actively involved in Leopold Elementary, where we participate in our innovative dual-language program, musicals, sports, fundraisers, carpools, celebrations, and so much more. This is my community. When the petitioning party began collecting signatures to move their agenda forward, some homeowners mentioned reasons to change our assigned school district based on low-grade performance, less attractive property values for families, bad experiences, and safety concerns. I personally feel that a proposed district change like this is inequitable for our assigned school and ultimately perpetuates and accentuates a cycle of social and racial disparities that exist in our cities. Our elementary school is richly diverse, and my family supports equitable experiences and outcomes for each student. We are motivated to help our children thrive in school, and we actively work towards creating a positive community culture that embraces diversity. School choice gives families the opportunity to stay or opt out, and it is my request that our Swan Creek neighborhood remains within MMSD. As you evaluate your decision, please consider the impact and message that is sent to our community of MMSD students, teachers, families, and friends. Please use your vote to build and empower an inclusive school community, advance educational excellence, and diversify our views and experiences. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The ninth speaker. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, Mike Trapanier, 5200 T Berry Lane, Swan Creek neighborhood. Couple weeks ago, I was here, and I spoke in favor of going to the Oregon School District and leaving the Madison School District. Still believe that today. My opinion has not changed. I think that we have, you're never going to reach a full consensus ever on decisions like this. It's very clear. We have people that feel that they should stay in the school district, and I think all of us respect that. But last time I checked, we're in a republic. And I would think that the majority rules here. We've laid out arguments. We can pitter-patter on square footage and talk about how we're not an island, but more or less we are. We are geographically closer. The new school will definitely be closer. The math sorts that out. So if anyone took math class, they would know that. It's closer geographically for us. So it's by far none. The majority of the people in Swan Creek want to move to Oregon. And I think that you should respect that opinion. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Zizilka. I'm here to speak in opposition of the petition. For brevity, I'm going to just read the letter that I sent to the Oregon School District, and I'm going to skip all the wonderful things that we have done for the Madison School District and that our children have received from there and get to the elephants in the room. With one exception, I want to say that the DLI value that our children receive cannot be overstated, as evidenced by the relative ease in our opinion that our seventh grader is now learning a third language. This would be lost if we are forced to transfer schools. In short, we are heavily invested in our children's schools and education and will continue to be, even if that means fighting efforts to unwillingly eject them from their own schools. Our children have many friends in the adjoining neighborhoods. And naturally, seeing their friends every day is part of what makes our kids' school days enjoyable. These friends live just across Fish Hattery and McKee Roads from us. And since those children are not targeted by the current expulsion effort, our children would, should this effort against them succeed, no longer even see their friends during the school days. We find this prospect to be, in a word, heartbreaking. When we purchased our home in Swan Creek eight years ago, we did so knowing what every single resident in the history of the Swan Creek neighborhood also knew, that we're part of the Madison Metropolitan School District. This is a fact, and with no disrespect to Oregon schools whatsoever, was most certainly a factor in helping us select a home. We absolutely wanted our children to attend Madison West High School. This was a choice we actively made, and we stand by. Now, there's a petition to dismiss our children against our wishes and the OSD, MMSD, boundary agreement that every single Swan Creek resident bought into. My expulsion is from MSD. It is a petition that on its surface seems to have an impressive number of signatures with little opposition. However, let me explain a few facts that led us here. At the beginning of the process, I stated my support for MSD and remaining part of it. Sadly, the attempted discussion rapidly devolved into an anti-MMSD rants and turned rather distasteful. What's worse is the assurances that accompanied the petition. My neighbors were promised that Pittsburgh's property assessments in Swan Creek would increase, but my own conversation with the assessor's office confirmed there is no such plan and that assessments rise and fall with home sales as one would expect. My neighbors were promised property tax reductions if they signed. But again, that is at best rosy speculation and more likely something far less innocent. It would also put forward that MSD agreed to grandfather-in all existing Swan Creek students. Again, that has not happened. That is not the case. There are claims that the original Swan Creek neighbors were presented with a miss, I'm sorry. My neighbors were presented with a mythical win-win scenario that our children and parents would welcome, which is obviously fiction. What was most disturbing, however, was the blatant anti-MMSD conversations that centered around the undesirability of the Leopold Elementary student body and neighborhood. I don't have enough benefits of the doubt to put that in a good light. Please reject the petition, and please do so in a way that will not make the sum of it to relitigate over and over. Thank you.
Speaker twelve, Tony. Next speaker will be speaker thirteen.
Good evening. Saw you a couple weeks ago. Basically going to state the same thing, but I do want to address a couple things. There are certainly some wonderful attributes of Leopold. One of them is the dual-language program. Unfortunately, not all students can actually take advantage of that. I'd like to point that out. The other thing is too is, I think that the folks that, including myself, that did this petition are being somewhat disparaged tonight. I would specifically call out Jason Strauss, who's been very upright on social media, letting everyone know what we're doing, being forthright and transparent. I appreciate the passion of the neighbors that did show up, but I will tell you that I too went around door-to-door with my wife and talked to many, many residents and spent our time for many months and got great turnout. We did have a handful of people who did not want to sign the petition. I respected that. One of the gentlemen tonight about wanting to have his children go to West High School, I certainly understand that as well. But the bottom remains that when I moved into this neighborhood fourteen years ago, But the bottom remains that when I moved into this neighborhood 14 years ago, there was not all this development around us. There wasn't going to be an elementary school that, by the way, not a mile and a half, it's going to be like a mile, from the border of our neighborhood. I mean, and again, I honestly came here not because I expect you to vote for this, because I really don't, because they're absolutely right, because I've read the contract myself. I totally understand that. You're bound, basically, to vote no. So is Oregon School District. The whole point of the petition, as far as I was concerned, is to let you know that though we have a passionate number of people who are dissenting tonight, the first I've heard of it, the majority of the residents of Swan Creek would be in favor of that, in favor of getting a consistent, congruent boundary that makes sense, that can make potential sense for the Madison School District as well as Oregon School District. Now, I would assume that the Oregon School District would be incentivized considering that they're building this new elementary school a mile from our neighborhood. So I'm very passionate, you can tell. I'm a lot more emotional tonight because I don't like being disparaged by my neighbors. But, you know, get involved then. You know, get your own petition together. I mean, we spent months, we were totally open on social media, over and over and over. You've been made aware over and over and over again, and it's very disheartening, and it's just sad to hear, you know? It's just sad to hear. Anyone could have contacted me personally, through Messenger, if you wanted to have a discussion. That's all I've got to say. Just beware that if you can make a sense for the Oregon School District and for you from a boundary and financial perspective and your growth perspective, I know you've got growth concerns as well for Madison, and Oregon obviously does as well, the majority of the neighbors clearly would be in favor of you using us if need be, if it would benefit your district.
Please finish up.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jordan Schmidt. I'm a resident of Swan Creek on Big Blue Stone Parkway. I am coming to support the resolution in favor of detachment from Madison and attachment to Oregon. I support this petition despite the complex history of the school district boundaries in our neighborhood, just by plain geography. I think looking... Anyone looking at a map of the school district boundary sees the complexity and the fact that we are, in fact, surrounded by Oregon School District. In the past, that hasn't been much of an issue. Recent development, though, has really exacerbated this and made clear the fact that we are an island. We have a situation now where students in our neighborhood, separated by only a fraction of a mile, from students all around them are attending not only different schools, but different school districts. This, as has been mentioned before, exacerbated by the fact that we have a new school building very close to us, which we will not be able to attend. I realize the complexity of this, especially given the 2002 existing agreements. The situation on the ground has changed dramatically from 2002. The constraints nonetheless remain. I realize that that means the board is essentially destined to vote no due to the legal constraints placed upon them. However, what I would ask is that this board would collaborate with the Oregon School District Board to possibly consider modifying or rescinding that agreement in a way that is... supports not only the interests of the Oregon enrolled students, but also those from Madison, that could include clauses such as grandfathering in, that would protect the rights of existing children, but really, in a way that would further the benefits to both Oregon, Madison, and, most important, the children of the neighborhood from both school districts. And with that, I would just ask for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would just like to agree with the petition to move from the Madison School District to the Oregon School District. I've done a little bit of research, and I'm not really sure why it was done, but in 2002, I don't believe anybody on this school board or in this audience was privy to this transfer. I mean, we're talking 17 years ago, signed in August 29th of 2002. It was a $5 million land transfer between Oregon and the school district, and for right now, I would fully agree to move forward with this. I believe I purchased my property in Swan Creek, knowing full well that I was going to go out of district. There was no question in my mind, so I support this, and I believe that's the right way to go. Again, if you do look at the map, we're the donut hole. We're the island with no place to go. So I agree, we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Folsner. I was here the last meeting as well, along with a lot of the supporters. I continue to support the petition to move to Oregon School District, along with a vast majority of the people in the Swan Creek neighborhood, as evidenced by the petition. It's a mile away from the school that's going to be built in Oregon, it's being built at the current time. We have one mile away, and as someone that used to... as a child that used to walk to school each day or bike, I know how much independence that can build. I would love for my future theoretical children to have the opportunity to do something along those lines. And that's really kind of the end of it, ultimately. There's been a lot of arguments about that other things are said on social media. Those really are the result of some of the opposition commentary, realistically. At this point, it's a geographical issue, and that's all it's ever been. It's... I would love to be able to go to a school that's a mile away and potentially a middle school that'll be a mile away in the Oregon School District. Also, from the... I'm a CPA. From the CPA standpoint, I have a hard time seeing us across the street where they're in the Oregon School District, and they have direct access to a school that is less than a mile away from them, and we do not have access to that school district. That could have an impact on a property value scenario. So again, ultimately, I'm in support of the petition to move to the Oregon School District. I very much appreciate your time. Make sure to give this attention, this issue attention, but also the attention of the very important issues that the other individuals here have today as well. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are looking for a solution that everybody can find acceptable. We are not looking to maintain the status quo. Voting down the Swan Creek petition will not make the problem going away. Voting it down in 2006 did not prevent another group from bringing a petition 10 years later. The percentages have become more skewed, with less than 50% of the students in our neighborhood attending Madison, and this will continue to decrease when the Oregon schools are built. How many Madison neighborhoods have brought two petitions for detachment within 12 years? Voting now will not prevent another group in the future from bringing another petition for detachment when the Oregon schools are built. Not a single speaker has come up here and said how this boundary makes sense. You have an illogical boundary and is causing an open enrollment imbalance. Unless you fix this boundary, this problem will continue. I love public education, but my biggest flaw is I can't keep my mouth shut when I see something that doesn't make sense in education. The goal of the master agreement was to enhance the number of students attending Madison. Is that what happened? Is the second-largest school district really enhancing the number of students? You've increased by 71 students, K4 through 12, a .2% increase. Is this what the drafters originally intended? Imagine for a moment that Oregon never transferred Swan Creek. Does anybody in this room honestly think that right now, in 2018, Oregon would be contacting Madison, asking to transfer Swan Creek away? The fact is, 15 years ago, Oregon didn't know what to do with Swan Creek. They knew they weren't ready to build a school for another 10 years. Madison was caring enough to take in the kids, and we appreciate that. But 10 years have passed. The situation has changed. If this petition is voted down, nothing is going to change the reality on the ground. In three years, I'd be willing to bet that out of the 100 students in our neighborhood, 30 will be attending Madison, and 70 will be open-enrolled. Does that really make sense? The current situation is only working for a small number of families. Choice is good, and I'm sure that all parents would agree that choice is good, but in the future, we'll be back here with the same situation. We have a neighborhood where the majority of students do not attend your district. Does that make sense? As educators, we serve the needs of students. We do not exist for students to serve our needs. Listen to what the majority of property owners want. You are going to be going to referendum very soon for a large amount of money. I want your referendum to succeed, but you're going to be asking people to support schools that their children don't even attend. Regardless of what happens tonight, I really do appreciate your service to education very much. Thank you.
Hello, I am Tori Westenhagen-Kirsten. I am in support of the Swan Creek petition, mostly for geographic reasons and what makes sense. Again, I am a graduate of MMSD. I have nothing against MMSD. I succeeded well, and I enjoyed my education time with MMSD. However, I chose my property and for my family based on geographic reasons, with the hopes that I would get into Oregon School District, and if we did not, we would go elsewhere. We would have selected a parochial school at that time. We did not want to attend MMSD, given our children's personal issues and situations that we are dealing with, and Oregon School District has been able to embrace our children and my particular family's needs. Again, the geographic location, which you've heard about, we are, in fact, an island, surrounded by Oregon. A brand-new neighborhood going up literally three blocks away is all Oregon School District. That neighborhood allows for busing to be had. My son is unable to ride the bus directly from his neighborhood, and we are forced to drive him to school. That is something we are willing to do and knew we would have to do because of the district lines. It's what makes sense. Being able to look out my front door and see a school going up that my children are unable to attend does not make sense. Another person here mentioned riding bikes to school. There's no way my child would be able to ride his bike to Leopold Elementary School. That is a very long drive on a bike. However, this new school is across a bridge over 14, and there will be a lot of obvious restrictions in place as far as traffic. A bike ride could be a legitimate possibility at this point. Again, the schools that are nearby in Oregon are what makes our goal in Swan Creek. I urge you to select and support this petition for the obvious reasons of just looking at a map and seeing this isolated circle that just stands out as saying, "Well, what's this? It doesn't make sense." What makes sense here for that particular neighborhood and the people of Swan Creek? Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last speaker for the proposed Swan Creek petition, and so now we will start with the general public appearances. So the first speaker, Lila, could make her way forward, followed by the second speaker coming down and being ready to speak next.
My name's Lila. I'm here, again, at the school board meeting. I've seen a lot of you before. There's a lot of us here tonight. There's a lot of people watching. There's a lot of people that are concerned about the way things have been happening for a long time in the Madison School District. We have seen more than eight, I think, instances of obvious racial violence perpetrated by Madison teachers or Madison staff this year. One this week has been especially concerning, and I think has brought a lot of people out, but it doesn't mean that this started now. We are here because we've seen this. This is a pattern. This is an example that is set by the school board, by the system, by the school district, that these teachers and staff are following because they know they can get away with it, because they know that's a culture of white supremacy and white violence against students of color that's been supported and defended by the school board. There've been youth that have been coming here for over a year and telling you, "We don't feel safe in our schools when you advocate for having police officers in schools. We don't want police in schools. We want community control. We want..." Excuse me. "We want community control of restorative justice. We don't want this brand of restorative justice that teachers that are assaulting students are apparently trained in. We want students to be listened to, to be able to come to you and speak without being shut down, ignored, having their names mispronounced, saying that they have to stop after a certain time limit when they're coming here and taking their own time to tell you that they aren't feeling safe." And we've seen that happen. We've seen this pattern, and you all are responsible for that. This is a system built on white supremacy that continues to benefit from white supremacy. So if you are doing nothing, if you're just waiting to see what happens, if you're just putting a teacher on leave, you're benefiting from that system. Your inaction is violence, and it's excusing the violence of these staff members and teachers and police officers and school security that are directly harming these students. And the community is watching you. We care about it. We're going to keep showing up here, here and other places, wherever this impacts our students and our youth. I'm proud of them all. I'm really glad to see a lot of them here tonight, and I hope you listen to them. I hope you make them feel heard, not only through your actions here, but your actions going forward, because you're all responsible for this, and we're all going to be watching.
Thank you.
All power to the people!
All power to the people!
My name is Brandy Grayson. I am a community activist. I have been a... I was a student of Madison School District. I am 38 years old. I have grandchildren. I have treatment and foster children. I have all kinds of children in my life. So you know why we're here. A little girl, a black baby, was brutalized and violated by one of your administrators. Your response to the violation was not good enough. Your denial of it by not addressing it immediately until eight days later, when the community started talking about it, is not good enough. Your dismissal of the experience of the children that show up week after week is not good enough. You can see the privilege in this room when you had these white folks come up here and talk about a boundary, and then use coded words as it relates to being inclusive and equitable, right? And one to be for the people, but I didn't hear you say nothing about the brutalization and violation of this little girl's life. And it continues to happen. And we know these meetings are just formalities. We know that there's deals that happen in the back room. We know you ain't really listening to us. We've done this forever, right? We've been marching and talking shit and demanding shit and liberation and justice forever. Your system is rooted in white supremacy, racism, rooted in capitalism, where you have a rich white woman running your board, who always talks about her family and her money and her influence. But somehow, y'all forget the destruction and violation to children's bodies that's taken place under your watch. And because it's under your watch, you are accountable, each and every last one of y'all. And I don't care if you put a black face on your board, a white face on your board, a brown face on your board, Asian, it doesn't matter, because by the very process and system and procedures, they have to uphold racism. And you continue to create these committees with the same faces and the same voices, denying the voices in the back, denying the legitimacy of our experience and destruction. And white people like to use coded words, inclusive and equity. You worried about a boundary? You worried about dual language? Our children don't even have access to that in your school district. We don't even have access to safety in your school district. We don't even have access to opportunity. That is what privilege looks like, and that is the root and foundation of the destruction of our children under your watch. And we just ain't going to keep talking to you. I'm tired of talking to y'all. But at this point, what we are going to do is create a rapid-response team for y'all asses. Y'all will not be able to deny the destruction and abuse of our children. We see you, and we won't stop seeing you, and we won't stop looking for you. And we will also form a legal team for that ass, so that our children can have protection and our families don't feel alone. Enough is enough, and we're tired, and we're sick and tired of being tired. Know that. I speak for the people, all day, every day. All power to the people!
All power to the people!
Hello, my name is Shelley Duffield. I'm a 6th grade teacher at Valma Hamilton Middle School. I am a co-creator and organizer of a grassroots group called Educators Actively Working Towards Anti-Racism, mostly for white teachers, community members. This is kind of our call to action to the board that, for the white board members, this is your chance to come and join us in conversation. Our mission statement is that we are committed to holding our district, schools, and staff accountable to anti-racism. We're committed to collaborating as co-conspirators to move the work of anti-
I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Valma Hamilton Middle School. I am a co-creator and organizer of a grassroots group called Educators Actively Working Towards Anti-Racism, mostly for white teachers, community members. This is kind of our call to action to the board that for the white board members, this is your chance to come and join us in conversation. Our mission statement is that we are committed to holding our district, schools, and staff accountable to anti-racism. We're committed to collaborating as co-conspirators to move the work of anti-racism forward across our district. We are meeting again this Wednesday at Dream Bank. We'd love to see you there, 6:00 PM. Every time we meet, we create personal goals. We all need to work on personal goals around anti-racism if we are white. So show up, 6 o'clock this Wednesday, Dream Bank.
Alright. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tevin and I am a nine-year-old kid. The teacher at White Horse Middle School hurt a black 11-year-old in school. And school should be a place for learning, knowledge, and safety. It is not...it is a teacher who did this and it is terrifying that a teacher hurt a kid. Teachers should teach kids knowledge in math and stuff. And you as a district should work really hard to make sure kids are safer in school. I'm nine years old and I know Black Lives Matter. Why are there...
I guess I am. So I saw Michael Johnson back there and Ananda Marilli and Anna Moffett and I asked them, "Are they going to encourage calm? Are they going to encourage getting all the facts or are they gonna rush to judgment?" And they said, "These people are gonna do what they're gonna do." I know that the police report is not in. I know that the teachers have not been allowed to speak. I think we should see what the situation is. One of them said, and one of them said, "We have to hold the school board accountable for not teaching our children." I agree with that. But we also have to hold the teachers accountable, we have to hold the parents accountable, and we have to hold the children accountable because we're all accountable. To say otherwise is to say you're a victim and therefore you have no agency. Now I wanna...now I wanna... Now I wanna read something that was given onto my Facebook page by Jennifer Drake Figgy. "My husband's 20-year career started and ended at Sherman Middle School due to a student's physical violence against him. Amazing what a traumatic brain injury can do to a person." And listen to that, would ya? They're helping me make my point. Jill Serniglia, "My grandson was so bullied that he had to be escorted from the car to the door after school. He's no longer at the school and lives out of Madison. Thank God. We need someone that's going to take care of the violence in our schools."
Please show the respect, same respect.
"It is sad that the schools and decisions of not making kids responsible for their actions have led to this kind of discussion. On your agenda today is the Behavior Education Plan. Margaret Savides Benbow said, 'I won't be voting for Blasko, but he is correct that after the adoption of the Behavior Education Plan, which did away with consequences for violent student behavior, there was a huge upswing in violent and unsafe incidents. This included bullying classmates, attacking teachers, loudly disrupting lessons, and attempts to study and learn. Nobody is saying that the solution is beat kids with the board. At the very least, the so-called BEP should be abandoned, as a failure it is, and the former standards of behavior and consequences should prevail. This should happen as soon as possible.'" Pam Jackson said, "Children should be taught respect in the home and reinforced in the school. Not enough parents take the time to be involved in their children's education plan. Parents need to take more responsibility for their children's education behavior." By the way, this is, I just wanna say, this is what we've got in our schools. I've said before that if this school board cannot keep order in its own meetings, imagine the chaos in the classroom. There's a reason why, I think, whatever it was, Swan Creek wants to leave. This is the problem we have in our schools right now.
You are the problem! You're the problem!
Thank you very much.
This is white supremacy! This is white supremacy! This is white supremacy! This is white supremacy! In school! In school! In school! In school! In school!
Please continue.
Wow. I look out and it's amazing because when I look out, I see some of my brothers and sisters who ain't never been at a school board meeting before. Salute to y'all. Thank you, boys. Salute to y'all. You know what? Turn me up a little bit, yeah. I wanted to come and I wanted to be radical because I'm kind of upset. And I wanted to be loud, but my spirit is super calm right now because I wanna talk to y'all. I want y'all to look, don't act like y'all not listening. Give me some eye-to-eye contact here, okay? Because I come in the spirit on tonight, so I'm not in my flesh. So right now, y'all fighting with some real power, okay? Cheatham, you know the deal. You know what's going on. You know why we're all here. You know why we're hurting because you've expressed your hurt with me. You know that you're even afraid for your own child to attend MMSD because these are your words from you to me. Remember? Remember? Yes? Remember? So I wanna look you eye to eye because me and you, we developed something really, really special when we sat amongst each other when you guys did what you did to my baby. So I'm not looking at the little dogs. I'm not looking at them. I want me and you to have a conversation here because you got to make a decision here. You have to choose your job or life. Because this is life and death for you now here, okay? Because you got position. All of this, you hold it. You hold it. Our babies, your baby, your African-American child. Let's talk deep here, okay? Alright? Your baby is up against what my baby is up against because he's an African-American, okay? So I want you to go home tonight. I need you to do this for me and you. Because remember, we vowed that me and you were gonna work together to change this, remember? Do you remember? Remember when you asked me to be your right hand because God put me and you together? Remember? That's what you said to me, remember? Remember? Okay? So now I need you to think about what you're doing here. You hold the power, shorty. It's yours. What are you gonna do with it? I ain't talking about them. They don't matter. You know, you the big dog. Not Mary, money don't matter. She ain't...she don't even matter. She's small. She's small. She might got the dollars, but that don't mean nothing. It's on you. Think about it tonight.
Maddie, this evening I am honored to stand in your shoes, so thank you. Thank you. Folks, this evening I am astonished to be here. I don't take pleasure in this, but it has been a long time coming. Your community has been serving you and showing up here and they've been met with lip service and false promises while the people that you put into positions of, you know, principal are beating on children. It's completely unacceptable what took place at White Horse and what is taking place. This isn't, as Blasko talks about, an upswing. This isn't an upswing. This is the norm, right? This is a constant failure that's been taking place. Y'all have allowed an environment to continue under your jurisdiction that completely dehumanizes students. And I come here this evening as a resident and worker of the Madison metro area. Why would I show up here as white, upper-middle-class individual? This is astonishing to me. I wish so much that this wasn't a story of two cities where we have on one side individuals who are concerned with, which is fantastic, concerned about the safety of their student's bike ride, whether it's going to make their children more independent and more successful and grow into fantastic adults. And here we have a completely different tale, folks that are concerned about whether their students are gonna come home in one piece. Split completely different between color lines. It's under your jurisdiction and you haven't done the work. You've failed your community and this community is not going to succeed without you taking the reins on this and taking ownership for the power that you can have. Now, folks are giving you a lot of respect by showing up here and I think that needs to be understood. Every time folks come up here and choose to speak to you, they are showing you respect. But what's disrespectful is that you allow individuals that are essentially hiling in the room to continue every time that you meet. Alright. So I ask you to imagine a Madison that doesn't have those distinctions, those clear color lines, where folks are on one side, one color tone is concerned about their kid's bike ride and one is concerned about the principle that you have put in place beating a child. Alright. Get to work, folks.
Hi, I'm Heather, it's actually Heather D., not Heather B., but I'm speaking tonight in opposition of spending $30,000 on special-duty officers. We can't afford to spend one more dollar on policing our students. There are many reasons to choose to spend our budget on other things like more counselors rather than police enforcement. Currently, our district is not meeting the recommended ratio of one counselor for every 250 students. To meet that ratio, we need about four or five more counselors and it's very important. I spoke a couple months ago about my daughter experiencing bullying in her public school and it's still ongoing. Today, I went to a counselor outside of school and she shared the reason why she hasn't been wanting to go to school is because of the bullying. We need more support in the schools. Another reason is, you know, force is not the answer, spending money on police. I graduated with a degree in psychology and my first job outside of college was in a psychiatric center as a mental health technician. And my first week on the job, there was a 15-year-old black girl who was in the center and she was really upset because she wanted, she didn't want to go to her room and she refused to go to her room when it was time, at bedtime. And I went over to go talk to her and I heard a nurse walk away and say, "This little bitch is gonna get it." And she went and got a team of people and while I was talking to the girl, she told me that the reason why, I asked her, "Why don't you want to go to your room?" And she said, "The reason is because I'm tired of being told what to do all day long." And she's just tired of it and she just refused then. She said, "I'm not going to my room." And I, we talked for a while and she calmed down and she said that, you know, I said the reason why we want you to go to your room is because there's adults in here and because of your safety and she was, we were on the same page and we were coming to an understanding. And out of nowhere, the nurse came back with a team of white people, grabbed her and gave her a shot in the arm to like help calm her down and sedate her, even though she was already calmed down and we were on the same page. She flipped out, she grabbed a chair and she threw it against a window and she broke the window. If you look at this girl and you think, "Oh, look, she's showing violence." Why is she showing violence? Because she was being forced to do things she didn't want to do and because people were putting her hands, people were putting their hands on her and they were harming her. So how else do you think she's gonna react? Of course she's gonna be really upset and act out. So I just think having police in the schools is just escalating things and it's making things worse and it's creating problems and people are, kids are acting out in response to being treated with force and being asked to obey in orders all the time and being told what to do. This is a natural response. So I just ask, no more spending on police in schools. Thank you.
My name is Christina Trevino Murphy. I'm an alumna of MMSD. I won't list all the schools. And it was a really positive experience for me. It set me up to be really successful. I went on to UW with a full scholarship. I still have good relationships with many of my teachers. I loved it. And so I was really excited to have the opportunity when now, as a PhD student, when people keep telling me I spend too much time on teaching and not enough on research, I took a job as a sub. And it's been a really life-changing experience in a lot of ways. It is truly a privilege and an honor to care for our children and our community. And it's a real burden. It's, because at the end of the day, what happens when someone is fired after using racial slurs, which that happened in the classroom that I took over as a long-term sub? Who do we call on after a child has been abused and that staff member is removed? It's substitute teachers. And we're a group that not many people think about very often, but we are the glue that holds together, the ecosystem, that helps teachers take breaks when they need them, that helps staff take care of their personal needs when they need them. And when these snow days happened, which like, you know what? It's Wisconsin. We all chose to live here. Maybe not. It happens. But I can't tell you how disappointed I was to find that after I'd been scheduled to work for weeks and while I spent my snow days, just like most other teachers, planning my lessons for the upcoming weeks and grading, I didn't get paid and the rest of staff and teachers did. And the professional development days where I'm supposed to get training, because I've had frankly barely any, I just happen to be lucky enough to have a degree in social work, barely any training, we've lost these professional development days, which means that I have now lost half of the day that I was supposed to be working at the long-term sub rate, which means I might pick up a shift at another school, but I'm not gonna get to build the relationships with my coworkers that helps the school function well, that helps maintain stability. I had to tell my students, kind of one by one, that the teacher that they used to work with, that they used to know and have relationships with, that she wasn't coming back. And that's not an easy thing to do. And when we're creating underclasses of workers, the conditions that we work in are the conditions that our students learn in. Like this is our community. The more stratification we have, the more disparities we have, like we're never gonna be able to see the kind of justice that we need. So it might seem like a small issue. It's a small number of people who are affected, but it makes this job sustainable. It makes it something more than just you can pick up a little extra cash on the side. It makes it something that I feel worth investing the time into doing more training, hunting down the appropriate staff member to get all the IEPs for my students, which I didn't have for the first three weeks. Like, it's a hard job. We deserve to be paid.
Okay. Yeah. Let's go, Adriana.
Okay. Wait, can y'all hear me? Okay. You all are, you all are supposed to be protecting us from harm, but you keep letting us get hurt. You should be ashamed of yourself and the way you think about, and the way you think about black kids, y'all are racist and y'all don't deserve to be our school, to be on our school board. There have been so many incidents lately and your response to all, to it all proves that you don't care about us and shouldn't be allowed to make decisions that affect our lives. I said it before and I'll say it again, you can't claim you care about black excellence and have police in schools. And you can't claim you care about black excellence and keep having teachers call black kids the N-word and put their hands on black kids. Okay, so y'all, you know we're gonna do a call and response. Okay. Mama, mama, can't you see?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
What the school board's done to me?
What the school board's done to me?
They beat us up and kick us out?
They beat us up and kick us out?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
What police have done to me?
What police have done to me?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Okay, y'all gotta say we're more energy this time. Mama, mama, can't you see?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
What the...
What police have done to me?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Okay, y'all gotta say it with more energy this time. Mama, mama, can't you see?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
What the school board's done to me?
What the school board's done to me?
They beat, they beat us up and kick us out?
They beat us up and kick us out?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
What police have done to me?
What police have done to me?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
What the school board's done to me?
What the school board's done to me?
They beat us up and kick us out?
They beat us up and kick us out?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
Mama, mama, can't you see?
What police have done to me?
What police have done to me?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
They lock us up and shoot us down?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Ain't no justice in this town?
Good evening. My name is Dambo. I am a mom of two kids and a grandmother. My youngest son is four years old. I thought when he gets older, like in high school, I will worry about his safety, but with a brutal attack on a child, a child, a baby at White Horse, I am heartbroken that this may happen to my son soon. No offense to the white woman who spoke about being worried about the kids or, and how they're going to school, while the black and brown moms have to worry about their kid's safety. It is not enough the police are attacking our black and brown kids. Now, a teacher in a classroom full of other kids can beat, beat a black child knowing he will only get a slap on the wrist. How are you not hurt and angry that an eleven-year-old child was beaten, beaten bloody at a school by a teacher where she was supposed to get her education? As a parent of a brown child, I should not have to worry about anything but that my son is getting the right education. If you are hurting our children now, imagine the damage you will cause for them in the future. Are you ready for the consequence, consequences of your actions and the decisions?
I am here today to speak for the valuable lives of black and brown and Southeast Asian children. You all know why I am here today, why we continue to show up. You all feel threatened by the ideas and collective power we project. Because you all know damn well that you only care about how much money you put into your pockets and not youth of color who's harmed in schools. These youth are telling you that they are scared for their own damn lives, telling you their own stories and telling you about their, about other children, their friends, who's been harmed by EROs. There was an incident at White Horse Middle School. Eleven-year-old black girl brutally beaten by the dean of students, Rob Mueller Owens. And I don't care what the situation is, no one should ever lay a hand on anybody. Violence is not the answer. Especially children. But there was, but where was help for her? Nobody helped her, not even cops. These are weights youth are holding onto their backs like chains. And it convinces me that the school board of Madison is racist as hell. Because you all are upholding white supremacy, you are responsible for black children's safety. If you think of putting more EROs to increase the safety of black and brown children, you should think again. Police themselves are made to punish black folks from escaping slavery, rooted from white supremacy. Even being black is dangerous. They're invincible chains you put onto children, the score to jail pipeline. So let us know who actually cares, because we are gladly to, we are gladly to have the whole community to kick you out of your seat. You all are threatened by the tone of our loud and brave voices, but we are, we aren't doing the harm. We're just telling you what's up and what, and we want to express our hurt. We are telling you what's up, but you all are just up there sitting, speaking in soft professional voices, but you all are doing the harm. And know damn well, y'all sneaky as hell. Oh, and I also voted for the school board election. Of course, y'all weren't voted by me, but you want true diversity, then you all should reconsider the economy, accountability we give to you all every school board meeting. If you feel comfortable, let yourself feel comfortable, because you should be listening to us and growing. We always have room for improvement, that's just how humans are. Please have goddamn humanity. Either way, y'all kicked out. Even if y'all make decisions today, we all can just kick the system's ass and abolish EROs for the next school board members who will be taking these seats. And we will continue to demand these three demands. One, take cops out of schools. Invest three thousand sixteen hundred dollars into youth of color. Students and family and community members have power over school safety.
So, um, I'm gonna try not to curse today, 'cause I'm trying to be a good child. So, five days of, out of the week, I'm forced into an environment that does not love and care about me and other students of color. And why do I say this is because I have many, well, of course, I have many reasons and stories, but y'all don't listen, but whatever. Um, but yeah, I'll only share four. So firstly, over the course of just a few months, November twenty eighteen to January two thousand nineteen, there had been six reported incidents of school staff using racial slurs. Um, not much happened because a few letters, besides a few letters here and there, um, those school staff not being allowed back. Uh, there was no real work put in transforming the school environment, no real effort to make sure that black and brown students feel safe or welcome or loved. Secondly, on February thirteenth, eleven-year-old African-American girl was beaten up to the dean of, by the dean of students. There is no reason you can give me to justify a grown man putting his hands all over an eleven-year-old child. No reasons, even parents aren't allowed to hit their own children. Thirdly, last week Tuesday, in my area China study class, there were questions about the China wall and that jokes came afterwards about the wall between Mexico and United States. And yes, I'm looking at you Gloria. People laugh, including the teacher. It was a very uncomfortable moment when the five Latino kids, students in the class finally brought up the issue of how inappropriate and racist this joke was and why the teacher did not address it. The teacher simply said, "I did not hear him, I won't interrupt the, uh, the lecture." So I guess the lecture's more important than the safety. Um, lastly, the school board voting to pass a contract to keep cops in our schools, even when we have been showing up every time for the last two years to share stories of why cops should not be in school and how we can better use our school money to create and maintain programs that will actually have, that will actually help develop and transform students, um, of color in their school environment. Just know that you all who sit up there, um, are responsible for every one of these incidents I brought up and there are so many more. You are responsible because you continue to ignore the experiences of black and brown students. You continue to put money into the police and put money into policies that harms black and brown students. Because of you, school staff get away with using racial slurs. Um, because of you, an eleven-year-old, um, was beaten up by a grown man. Because of you, white students and teachers feel like they can't make jokes about black and brown people. The school board and superintendent are responsible for all of this. And black and brown students have been showing up and telling you that we want better and I want y'all to say this with me, we want no cops in schools.
No cops in schools!
Investing youth of color!
Investing youth of color!
No cops in schools!
No cops in schools!
Investing youth of color!
Investing youth of color!
No cops in schools!
No cops in schools!
Investing youth of color!
Investing youth of color!
Okay, all of these school board meetings we've been to clearly shows ignorance you have towards people of color. At the last school board meeting, four school members voted for cops to be in schools and two voted for no cops in schools. This is such a big disappointment, disappointment. How can you all say that you truly care about our safety when you are putting badges and guns in our schools where we are supposed to learn? The police are trained to use deadly force, that is their job. The police are a violent institution. Why are you allowing, allowing such violence to be in our schools? I hate the fact that you guys said that we are just being disrupted when there was a white man recording minors and making them feel uncomfortable. Stop trying to make our voices separate in silence. We are still standing here today. Just because I am young doesn't mean I don't have a voice. My voice matters too. You putting cops in our schools is just preventing us from our education. Apparently, education's free, but why does our parents still pay for food supplies, for school supplies, yearbooks, bus card and so many things while you could have invested that three hundred sixty thousand dollars towards that? We want investment in students of color, not the police. We want the school district to stop harassing students of color. We want our education, not criminalization. So invest in us, not criminalization.
What's up, y'all? I'm here, I'm really here to talk to y'all, fuck them. My name is, I'm tired of this anti-black shit, you feel me? See, we live in, we live in America, right?
Fire.
We have a long legacy of violence in schools, right?
Yeah!
During enslavement, and we can kill for being right, right? Freedom schools, kids were killed, our young babies beat up like the incident here for organizing, to the Black Power movement to now. They have a Black Death plan, calling it the Black Excellence Plan. Well, we know Black Excellence is saying, "Fuck school, I'ma skip." They talking about some white supremacy Donald Trump shit in the curriculum. You know what Black Excellence is? I'ma show up to the school board meeting and tell them what it is. You know that Black Excellence is taking control of our own shit?
Yeah!
Right? So what happened to us on those plantations when we rebelled? Violence, right? What are they doing to us in school? Fuck them! You, you lying to me. When you say, "I don't like this discipline plan." Violence, right? But they gotta know that we live in the legacy of Na Turner?
Yeah!
We live in the legacy of Ariot Tuckler?
Yeah!
We took that shit to our own hands?
Yeah!
Like Malcolm X said, "By any means necessary."
Any means necessary!
Right?
Yeah!
So they better be ready for what's to come?
Yes!
Fuck, I don't, they can't do shit, schools will always be violent. Let's put it in our case, who would that look like? We gonna tell all they dumbasses accountable?
Yeah!
Y'all, if y'all are able, can, can people stand up who know somebody who experienced school violence?
Yes!
Stand up, stand up! Know somebody that experienced school violence? So raise your hand! All these people, experienced, or know somebody that know, who experienced school violence? This is the force that we got. This is our people.
Y'all know!
Right? See, we got this, y'all. Fuck them! If they don't do what we are doing, and we are making them do, that's all I got. No cops in schools!
I am freedom, Khmer woman, orphaned genocide survivor, refugee child, a single mom, a person of color. I am a human being just like you. I am a leader, a teacher and an advocate. I know that it is like to live in a world of authority and power. The Khmer Rouge was a leader who thought they knew what was best for our people. With their own authority and greed of power, they made decisions that harmed and killed one point seven five million Khmer people. I'm experiencing this today here with all of you. Each of you are authority figures with power to make changes. You may not kill millions of people, but you are harming thousands of blacks and brown students each day because of your decision. Today, we had an immigration lawyer who came and talked to our communities about our rights and our protection from ICE. I want to address you all, your police is the same as ICE. They have the same job description and that is harming and separating families. We don't want ICE in our city, the same goes with the police. We don't want them in our schools. ICE separate families and police destroys youth lives by entering them into the criminal justice system. We need to take police out of school so we can protect our futures of our blacks and brown youth to better and to have a successful experience in school. I also wanted to repeat on what had happened at White Horse Elementary School, where a dean of student beat an eleven-year-old black girl, eleven-year-old. You see that little boy who just came up here? He was nine years old! This was an eleven-year-old girl. No child should be treated this way. How about if it's your daughter? How would you feel? He should be charged for child endangerment for harming this eleven-year-old girl, black girl. If you are willing to criminalize black girls the way you do, criminalize him. Punish him for the harm that he has done. All of us are here, continue to come here and voice ourself and demand the following. Completely remove police out of schools. Invest resource in education that promotes leadership, wellness, learning and creativity for youth of color. Give community control over school safety. Students, families, communities need decision-making power in our schools. Give, build, transform as justice model instead of punishing youth, please.
Okay, don't start my time yet, I gotta think. Alright, uh, my name is Gajua and, um, today, tonight, I actually just wanna talk about two things. The first is, um, a child is a child and a grown-ass person is a grown-ass person. And the second thing I wanna talk about is silence is condolence of white supremacy. So the first thing is, I have an eleven-year-old who goes to White Horse. She's Hmong and I can tell you that she has also had run-ins with Owens and has talked about being scared of him. Any man who terrorizes eleven-year-olds, this has nothing to do with parenting, as racist Alaska said. It is not about parenting, it is about adults terrorizing children. If you can see his humanity, then you surely can see her humanity. She's eleven years old. I have an eleven-year-old who wakes up every morning and sprays perfume all over the house. Now, if I had beaten her, like he had beaten her, I would be in jail, waiting for you all to sort out what the crime was. So my request is simple, lock him up, let's sort it out while he's locked up. Make sure that the bill is high enough, because I'm unsure how safe my kids are with him in the school. Now, what white supremacy looks like is, this grown-ass man can be seen as somebody who lost it or we're not sure what really happened. It doesn't matter what happened. What happened was a grown-ass man lost his temper and took it out on an eleven-year-old. Now, let's see what he does at home. Because if he could do that in public, let's see what he does at home. The other piece is, white supremacy looks like, where's David? Oh, he left. Uh, I'm seeing all our kids' photos and, uh, my organization, all over his blogs. And I'm telling you, anybody gets harmed, it's on him and it's on you all allowing him to continuously videotape these young kids. That's what white supremacy looks like. And so why am I, as a And so why am I, as a Hmong mother, a Hmong woman, a refugee kid, here to support an 11-year-old black girl? Is because her humanity is tied to mine. And until you can see her as a, as a human being, I know you can't see me. And so, I'm saying to all of you, whatever it is, lock him up. Wait until we can figure out the details, because I'm unsure we're safe with him out here. Because that's what we would do to anybody out here. So, no cops in schools and invest in children.
Thank you, thank you. I am 100% against the contract with MMSD and MPD. I've said that dozens of times at this point, but you all continue to ignore me. It's been a while since you've seen me, and I have a lot to say. I am honestly tired of the lack of respect you all have, not only for me, but for this community. We have been coming to these meetings for almost two years, and I've watched as you all act as if you've been listening to what we've been saying, then use our language to act the exact opposite of what we want. I am tired of reading about teachers abusing our black and brown bodies. Tired of reading about teachers pulling braids out of an 11-year-old's head. Tired of having to come and defend on why we should feel safe. Tired of crying after seeing so many children committing suicide because of what's happening at schools. I'm tired. I want to be able to wake up to see more black and brown youth graduating over dying. Y'all contribute to our destruction instead of building us up. You continue to sit back and watch as we are harmed and come up with bogus solutions instead of listening to us. We know best how to help our people. If you can sit here and listen to a racist-ass white man who's been exploiting and harassing us for months, then you can listen to these black and brown youth tell you why they don't want people like him in schools every day. We demand that this contract is ended immediately. We shouldn't have to keep coming to these meetings to prove why we don't need them, because you can see on your TV screens at home. We've been getting tossed around like rag dolls, and you seem not to care. But if the tables were turned and we were white, we'd get what we want immediately. If white kids were to be getting thrown out of desks or missing chunks of what y'all call hair, it would be hell. White kids can continue to come in here and speak, and you actually engage and thank them for being courageous, while when we do the things, we're reckless and disrespectful. Stop making us feel threatened, and your meetings will go back to how they were before you started attacking us. Thank you, and no cops in school.
My name is Amitha. I'm a youth leader at Freedom Mink. I've been here long enough where it was from the conference room to this odd. It was just us FI folks to a million people behind me, giving our testimonies about how we felt about having cops in our four high schools. But yet, you all decided not to listen and annoy us. I am upset on your decision you made at the last school board meeting, but yet I knew you scoreboard members wouldn't change their minds, even if we came here months after months. You all are too, you all are too privileged to see that police only protect white skins and not people of color. I'm tired of seeing us getting treated badly. I'm tired of you all sitting, sitting in your own, your seats peacefully and happily while us down here, the people of color, are getting harmed. At these past school board meetings, I came to realize that you guys up there weren't here to protect us. Instead of taking action, you would rather sit in your seat and care about yourself than caring about what was happening in the audience. You all made the decision on keeping the cops in schools today, so from now on, when you see a person of color get hurt in school, you all made this happen. It was all you guys' fault for deciding on making this decision to destroy all these kids' lives. It isn't about me and the people behind me. It was because of you all allowed this to happen. Just because you all made the decision on keeping the cops in our schools doesn't mean that we will stop showing up. Our fight isn't over. You all will continue, continuously see us come here until we get what we want. No cops in school and invest youth of color.
Hey, y'all. They got about 14 microphones up here. What's going on? Okay, uh, yeah, so at this point, everything pretty much has been said, um, over months and months now. You know, I'm still not clear if y'all know why these people are here. If y'all know why I'm here. I mean, do you? I, I know why I'm here. I know why these youth are here. I know why my people are here. Not just in this room, but in this situation, in this time, in this place, in Madison. I'm here because you all choose to uphold white supremacy. Time and time again, you apply it, like, I don't know, like it's butter or some Lowry's to everything, any situation. Y'all slapped some white supremacy on it. And you haven't learned yet that it doesn't work. It only harms. Even you. I'm sure y'all are tired of sitting here. I'm sure y'all have anxiety over coming to these meetings. I know TJ said he do. I'm saying, y'all keep applying, upholding it as a value. You want us to line up. You want us to speak quietly to keep time, while you beat our children down every day. It doesn't take aggression to be violent. Y'all have taught me that more than anything, more than any studying or any political education I've ever had. Y'all have taught me that. As many times as we have said this to you, remove cops from schools, invest in youth of color, give community control over discipline, you still choose to double down on white supremacist policies and procedures. As a board, you all set the tone for the rest of the district. You all set the tone for the overpolicing and criminalization of black children and other youth of color. As school board members, you antagonize us, you dismiss us. You are responsible for any harm that comes to black and brown children in our schools. You. I don't wanna hear, "Oh, I don't know how to fix this." I don't wanna hear thoughts and prayers. I don't wanna hear none of that. You're responsible for it because you have not taken action in accordance to what the community has told you about what's going on. You all are responsible for the brutal beating of an 11-year-old black girl, an 11-year-old black girl, an 11-year-old black girl at White Horse Middle School earlier this month. You can no longer claim ignorance, no longer claim you have no solutions. What more do you want? I know what I want. I want you to take responsibility for the criminalization of black girls in your schools and our schools. I want you to take actionable steps towards divesting from police and other harmful discipline policies. I want you to invest in creating environments where black children feel welcome, can learn and grow. I want community control over discipline, because it's clear to me that what you're doing is broken and, quite frankly, it's sick.
Well, a lot has been said. I would love to say the same things over, which I do think a lot of things need to be reiterated for the school board members, obviously, after the two years we've been here and nothing that we've said has gotten to y'all's brain. First off, it's February. Yes, I was just gonna talk about that Black History Month. What a wonderful way for the Madison School District to celebrate Black History Month. Wonderful. We got black excellence? We got an 11-year-old black girl who, who got brutally beaten by this grown-ass fucking white man? Yeah, your Black Lives Matter Week, right? Which, by the way, you all cut off the last demand, which was clearly about taking cops out of schools. So this is the environment in the Black Excellence setting our school district talks about. It's disappointing, right? Black History Month is supposed to be a time to honor the contributions of black freedom fighters who struggle to make a more just society for all people. But you all don't care, because you all don't even respect these black youth that have been coming here, right? These black youth organizers who are carrying on this legacy. Y'all don't care. And it's, it's disappointing, right? You've heard these stories. You've heard of people being really upset. So what are you going to do? You need to be doing more. You cannot just sit there and listen, or pretend to listen, right? So, I know you've all have heard our demands, but if you need a little bit more in understanding what that really means, I can, I can like tell you right now, and then we should also set up a meeting. So, I, I'm requesting a public meeting with, you know, a public meeting. You all come to our community. Our folks will be there. You bring some food, okay? So, we demand, we demand that you dismantle school policing systems. School districts must end their relationship, both formal and informal arrangements with local, county, and state police departments. School districts must dismantle their internal school policing forces and departments and give control of school safety to us, local community members. Right? We demand that you divest from law enforcement and school militarization, right? So that means disarming all school personnel, including school security staff, and, right? We also demand that you invest in student supports that create real safety for students of color. Fully fund and implement restorative justice in all schools. Invest in culturally reflective and responsive counselors and social workers. Fully fund comprehensive mental health programs, services, and staff. And again, I'm more, more than open for you all to come have a community discussion of this. It's on the table. Now it's on you to take it.
So, I remember, perhaps it was four or five years ago, and I was in a meeting similar to this, except it was the mayor and the, you know, the mayor's cronies. And I said, "Look, your police are out of hand. You need to get them under wraps." And the group of people said something like, "We're not as bad as the places. It's not like we have cops killing people." And then a year later, if that, months later, Tony Robinson was shot and killed and murdered. And then months after that, Ciara Finkley needed help from police, but they arrested her when she had to fight for her life. And then a month, couple months later, Janelle Laird, which we were able to get on video, was being beat and tossed by grown man police, uh, police officers. And we were there to say, "We told you that this would happen, because this is the result of white supremacist racist policies." Now, here we are, four or five years later, and I'm in a similar setting, right? Where we were here two years ago and said, "You have white supremacist policies." And these policies are forcing black kids to not have good education, tearing up the morale of black children, not supportive of black families who want to support their black children within the schools. And people say, "Oh, well, it's not that bad, because we're not like other places where our black children are being beaten by teachers." And here we are. There you go. And we just happened to get video of this one. Right? We just happened to get video of this one. And my 10 years of domestic violence expertise teaches me about how violence happens. And so I think about the violence that he did that we can report and record, but I also think about the amount of abuse and violence this white man has done before he put hands. And so you all are charged with figuring out, how are you going to repair the complete harm caused by him? So how is she, as a black, as a young black student, going to be brought back to her wholeness based on that violence? And not just her, what about every other student this person is coming to contact with? I think about every other student this person is coming to contact with. I think about all the possible decision-making they had over any policy, over any decision of any rule. This is how white supremacy manifests. And so we actually, we demand repair and harm, but we follow the footsteps of our reparations, of our answers to say, "Motherfucker, we want reparations." We want complete reparations. And that's going to start by investing in black youth, but it will not end there. And so, we are here to assert and to demand and to make for, to make possible what is deserving of us. First and foremost, no cops in schools, because what we know, if there was a police officer there, he probably would have arrested her for getting her ass whooped. Because that's how the police function here in Madison, Wisconsin. The second is investment in black youth. There is clear harm done to black youth. If there wasn't, you all wouldn't have come up with the Black Excellence Program. That is admission that there is problems and issues happening with black youth. And I wanna say very quickly, it does not matter how many black friends you have. It does not matter how many relationships you have with black people. Doesn't matter how many black shows or songs you like. You will be measured by the success of black students. That is how we know this is white supremacy. And third, and third, we are fighting for community control, because we know that the success of black students is in the hands of black people. And so we are going to use our black leadership to give our students what it is that they deserve, because we know that you can't do it. So really, what we saying is, get the hell out of our way.
So I'm not feeling well, but I saved up just enough energy to come here today. Okay, so first of all, I just wanna address a few things. TJ, if you wanna stop being called a patriarchal white supremacist, then stop fucking being one. Mary, if you wanna stop being called a liberal racist, then stop using the police to harm black people. Yes, we know about that. A lot of people are pissed at y'all right now, and rightfully so. Y'all are directly responsible for this incident. Y'all are directly responsible for this young black girl being assaulted by this white man. Y'all set the tone for the district, and y'all lead by example. Y'all don't give a fuck about black cute students, so why should this white man? Why should other school administrators? This is just one of many incidents that have happened daily to our children. We work with so many families that are scared to come out right now, but they're on their way. From being called the N-word, to being kicked out of class for chewing gum, to teachers tugging on black girls' skirts, telling them that they're being sexually inappropriate, from officers at Lefale sitting on black children, to this girl being beat, y'all are responsible. And this community no longer trusts you with the safety and wellness of our kids. Y'all have a half-assed Black Excellence agenda that will not work unless you keep your fucking hands off our kids. It will not work until you divest from police and invest in our kids, and it won't work until you get these racist-ass teachers out of the school. Our communities don't need officers to motivate us, which was presented in a few meetings, a few meetings back. We need housing. We need black-centered education. We need healthcare. We need healing. We need transformative justice, and we need power, and we gonna take that shit. That is how you get rid of the harm that y'all are so worried about. Not by investing more money into police, not by, by investing into medical, metal, metal detectors. That's the work that I do every day, and that's what we're demanding of y'all. So, we are gonna avenge the suffering of black youth in this city. Avenge the suffering of black youth in this city by any fucking means necessary. Again, we demand that you end the contract, completely remove police from schools. Not in our high schools, not in our elementary schools, not in our middle schools. Create accountability processes for people that harm, harm our kids directly and that use law enforcement to harm our kids. Invest in learning, wellness, and creativity of youth of color, divest from police, and we demand community control over school safety. We don't trust you with the safety and wellness of our kids. We want real decision-making power, not no fake-ass community review board with police officers and hand-selected. with police officers and hand-selected Black students on it. Call and response, y'all. We demand...
We demand...
We demand...
We demand...
No cops in school!
No cops in school!
Disgusting youth of color!
Disgusting youth of color!
Community control over school safety!
Community control over school safety!
My name is Hannah Renfro. I have three kids in Madison schools, including a Black daughter who is in 7th grade at Velma Hamilton Middle School. Look at her, TJ! Can you hear me now? Is this working now? Okay. My name is Hannah Renfro. I have three kids in Madison schools. Alright, start the timer over, please. Thank you. I have three kids in Madison schools. I have one daughter who is a 7th grader at Velma Hamilton Middle School. She is Black. Shy and very concerned about the deep-seated racism in our schools. I have a lot to say tonight, but mostly, you should listen to all the people who spoke before me. I do want to say two things. One is that I am, I'm not an educator, and I don't know what it's like to be an educator. I'm not a person of color, and I don't have those experiences, and I don't know what that is like. But I do know that I, as a white person, am going to keep fighting against the silence of racism in the white community. I know that my daughter has been going to schools where the general curriculum ignores the history and the culture of people who look like her. I know the kids say racist comments in the hallways. I know that one of her teachers called another student the N-word. She goes to a school district where a child who looks like her was beat up by a teacher, by the acting principal that day. And we all know about the statistics on the gross racial disparities in this school district. A school district that touts itself as being national excellence. This board must take concrete steps now to address these issues. Not next week, not in six months, not when everybody feels ready to do it, but now. And as you prepare that work, and as you do that, you need to rely on, not just listen to, you need to rely on the people in this room. The people that have come here today. The organizations like Freedom, Inc., like the Boys and Girls Club, the parents, the youth that have come here, and apparently have been coming here for a long time and speaking to you. You need to rely on them. This board cannot solve this problem on its own. You need, you got an invitation for a community meeting, you need to say yes. You need to go to that meeting, and you need to listen to folks. Thank you.
That is what white supremacy looks like.
Am I good? Go, yeah, okay. Good evening. This, I'm Laura Ostrander. I have long been watching board meetings at my computer on evenings, and I've been watching the conversations of our Black and Brown youth and the idea of having police in schools. I have never stepped forward at this public mic until now. I have forever been a teacher dedicated to our Black and Brown students in the past 18 years in the Chicago Public Schools. And for the last 10 years, I have been dedicated to these students in the Madison schools. I have advocated, I have asked for help, I have let people know we need more resources. I have watched the same things come from this audience, asking you to hear them. And I still am waiting to be heard along with them. A quote, "We may be uncomfortable talking about race, but we can no longer afford to be silent. We have chosen a profession that, like parenting, requires us to put our comforts second to those of children." I need to say to the audience, I am a teacher at White Horse Middle School, and I support your Black and Brown students. I have been told in my past advocacy that my passion and my emotion is strong, and maybe too strong, to take on leadership roles, to take our district forward. And here's what I say. I have always been a real person. I have never been able to walk that line of what it looks like to say the right things in the right places. But with those Black and Brown children that sit before me in my classrooms, I move every single one of them emotionally, socially, and academically, until they go on to the next classroom beyond me. Yet nobody hears me, nobody listens, I ask how I can be a part. So just as these people say, "Come to a meeting", I say, "Please come to a meeting, come to White Horse." Not two days after an incident has gone public, but because you know right now it's needed. And to the people that aren't feeling heard in the audience, I want to be a part of the change. With you, find me, Laura Ostrander. Find me, I'm on that side, I will work with you. And if we need to do this together, I'm in it for the long run.
Sarah here. I was not planning on going right now. All power to the people.
All power to the people!
I speak in the place of a parent who is here tonight who is too shaken by the lack of response about incidents at White Horse and your stoic and polite smiles today at this board meeting, hearing these stories while that 11-year-old child's lips heal and stop bleeding. I have a question. And my question for you, Mary, for the rest of the board, is whether or not you see us as human. When your daughter with blonde or brown hair, when your son with white skin is upset and does something destructive, you love them, you love her. You don't rip three braids out of your daughter's scalp. You don't continue to punch her. You would make sure the teacher who perpetrated these violences was, career was destroyed. A young girl who could be my daughter had her hair ripped out from the rest of her scalp, and I will not stop repeating that description. When cops are in schools, cops are trained to see potential threats. A hand movement is a potential threat. A hairbrush then is transformed into a potential gun. When your child moves suddenly, does she or he experience a cop grabbing her by the arm because their job is to see threats and not children's hands? $30,000 needs to go to contractors, counselors, tutors, instead of the police department or security firms. And you know that. But you also serve constituents like Speaker 5B who see us as irrational beings, who need police officers in our classrooms. I want to know what your personal investment in that scenario is. What is your personal investment in seeing us and treating us as if we were not human like your daughter?
You make your decision. You answered that question when you make your decision on this $30,000 security package. That's the question that you are answering when you inevitably decide to invest that money in people who are trained to see threats, who are not immediately trained to see children. You are answering the question as to whether or not you see me and you see us as human beings who are entitled at least to justice for somebody, for the mother of that child, for the child that got her braids ripped out, her whose lips were cracked and bleeding. I'm here because there is a parent at White Horse who has talked to you specifically. I'm here because there are many people who have worked with you specifically. I don't need to repeat what was just beautifully said up here before. I need to know what your investment is in not seeing us as human beings who are entitled to safety. Because with that decision, on the $30,000 for security forces and cops and metal detectors, I've been a teacher who has had to have a metal detector in my hand to wind down middle school students in Louisiana. Have you ever seen the literal life and joy disappear in your daughter's eyes? I'm no longer a teacher there. It was mandatory protocol that we did. I want to know what your investment in seeing the life drained out of these students as you jailed them in schools. I know I'm speaking over time. I appreciate you listening. But the true question is, do you even see us as human beings?
Yes.
I would like you to prove that.
I'd be happy to set up a time to talk, I think if you... Yeah. You know, um, this is the public appearances, and as you said, we did...
Prove it with your decision tonight, or when you get a chance to vote on this security package. That is how you can prove this to us.
No, no. If you need to take a break, take a break.
Students seem to have little power in their educational system. The students of this country want more power to make decisions on policies that affect them. We as a whole will be a more unified nation in the field of education when students work together with administration to make policies that equally benefit them both. Students demand a voice and a change in the curriculum to include people of color and women because diversity is the cornerstone of democracy. And in Madison, Wisconsin, West High School is the most integrated of them all. Democracy and diversity supports equality, and with equality, every student has a greater chance to succeed. Administration should always consider student demands and concerns that are reasonable to solving conflicts and power struggles within our institutions. Students... With school administration putting policies in place that affects us students with us, without us knowing until during the time they're being enforced, it makes us feel that we have minimum control over our education and that our ideas and suggestions are being repelled. It's that taking things into consideration and into action part that speaks louder to us than the words of mischief. We students at West High School want a contributing voice in the policies that affect us for we are the primary beneficiaries of these policies. We students are already contributing positively to our school's growth by being the factor that makes the schools run, and being the factor that makes the schools work. Having a student board that is actively involved in the decision-making processes will also make us the main factor in improving student discipline and overall student performance and in outside of the classroom. Democracy is freedom. The freedom to speak out, the freedom to be heard, the freedom to be included, the freedom to teach, the freedom to learn, the freedom to lead, and the freedom to make a change and be that change. And I'm standing here before you today because I want to see that change and make that change. And speaking for all students, I want that freedom to be heard and that freedom to be included, especially if it's for something that's going to affect me and my abilities as a minority student in any institution. Thank you.
Is Heidi here?
Okay, next speaker, Amy Castro.
Let's go, Amy.
Thank you. Y'all, I was just thinking about how nice it must be to have your issue be separated from public comment as it was earlier this evening. Oh, how nice it must be to feel heard. Last week, an 11-year-old girl was physically abused by an MMSD employee. How can you commit to Black excellence and allow one of your people to put his hands on a baby? How can you justify not firing him and instead putting him on leave? We all know what happened. How can you expect police in schools to behave any better when they've treated youth the same way outside of schools? You all become completely surprised when stuff like this happens. You demand proof, numbers that prove racism and inequality exists, yet when students who face these issues every single day, like the students behind me, who repeatedly come to these meetings to tell you they exist, along with recommendations of what would make them more successful in schools, you shut them down. And you write Black and Southeast Asian students off as aggressive and unruly, which we all know is extremely racist. This is a catch-22 and is rooted in white supremacy. You ask that students bring proof of what happens to them, and when they bring their experiences, statistics, and proof, you say that it's not enough. you say that it's not enough or it's a minority. And as Brandy said, we're sick and tired of being sick and tired. We're sick and tired of being sick and tired. For people of color, we didn't come to the US, the US came to us. It's time for reparations, as Em said. No cops in schools. Use the money to fund programs that promote leadership and the well-being of students of color. That's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I can think of ten better uses off the top of my head, but I have a minute left, so I'll keep going. And the third demand is let the community have control over the discipline of students. We all know that this isn't about people for you all. It's not about money. It's not about students. It's about money and maintaining the status quo and white supremacy. But for us, this is about the people. As Cesar Chavez said, "The fight was never about grapes or lettuce. It's always about people."
Next speaker, Liam. Okay. Next speaker, Kim.
I have so much to say. I guess I have three minutes. First thing I have to say is that there is an eleven-year-old girl who's had three braids pulled out of her hair, which I can't even begin to imagine the pain, who needs thirty thousand dollars.
Want to talk about reparations? Let's talk about reparations.
You got thirty thousand dollars. That little girl will never be the same. You take your thirty thousand dollars. You know how much therapy thirty thousand dollars buys you? Almost nothing. This child will suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder for the rest of her life because a fifty-some-year-old, large, white principal beat her in front of other people and got away with it. Got away with it. And you know, I think it's important that this little girl was eleven and petite. I think that's important. But I'll tell you what, I have a two-hundred-and-fifty-pound, six-foot-tall, black fifteen-year-old and if they beat him, it's just as important as when they beat these little girls because these are children! These are children! You are attacking our children! You are letting administrators and police officers beat our children! I've spent years trying to make sure that my son isn't permanently destroyed at the hands of your police officers and administrators. Years. He's fifteen years old. I've been trying to keep him out of the hands of the police for fifteen years. And what do you do to a little girl? A little eleven-year-old girl? You allow a principal to beat a little eleven-year-old girl? You have to make this stop. We are going to make this stop. We are going to make this stop. We are going to make this stop. Because you know what? They are not going to make it stop. We, working together, make it stop. You know Malcolm X said, "So long as we have capitalism, we have racism." And we know what this is really about. This is really about defunding public education. Ultimately, it's about... We talk about the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for funding the police. You know what a tiny drop in the bucket, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars is? That is such a tiny drop. Hell, give that little girl three hundred and sixty thousand dollars because that's about how much therapy she's gonna need. You touch my kid, you touch my kid, and I will sue you and it will cost you millions of dollars. Millions and millions of dollars. Our children deserve an education. They deserve respect. They deserve love. They deserve a decent life. And you know what? Our anti-racist teachers are stepping up. And our anti-racist teachers with our families and our students, we're gonna come together and we're gonna fight this damn racist system!
All I'm going to say is, for as frightened as our community is of police and of fifty-two-year-old white men in positions of power within our education system, you better be afraid of all of the faces who are looking at you right now because like the speaker before me just said, we will keep ourselves safe. We will keep our children safe at any and all costs. We're not asking no cops. We are telling you, no cops in schools.
My name is Becky Rollin and I'm embarrassed to say this is my first school board meeting. I have two daughters. One is twelve and one is eight. They are biracial. When my wife and I decided to have kids thirteen years ago, I never thought I'd be standing here being embarrassed to be a white person. I look at you all up here tired. You look tired. Some of you dipped out to go to the bathroom. One of you isn't even looking at me in the goddamn face right now. And these people out here have to work three jobs to make the amount you guys do. They're tired. They're tired. It's eight o'clock tonight and they're tired and they're here to fight for their lives. My babies, I pulled them out of school. I switched schools three times last year in the Madison School District. Three times. In an elementary school and in a middle school because I was scared to death for my children. My eight-year-old is brilliant. She has autism. She has Asperger's. I asked for an IEP four times and was denied. Denied. Because my black daughter obviously had behavioral issues. My diagnosis of autism in their face four times turned her away. My daughter was called an F-N-B every single day by two white boys. When I went in to have meeting after meeting with this school, they told me she provoked it. She provoked them attacking her verbally and physically because she didn't know the power in silence, the power in ignoring. To me in my house, that sounded like the power of ignorance. My daughters are taught that they can be anything they want to. In November, I pulled my daughters. I'm homeschooling them now. These people behind me, they don't have the white privilege of not working. I'm white here. My wife makes a great salary and I have the privilege of staying at home with my kids. The people who need the love and the support can't afford to do that. You are failing, these people. They deserve to feel like decent people. This eleven-year-old girl got up and got ready to go to school in the morning to come home and tell her mom when she asked, "How was your day, baby?" She wanted to say, "I had a great day. I saw my friends. I learned." But instead, she got to come home and talk about her hair being fucking ripped out of her head. These kids aren't safe. When we talk about that we are the last city in the States for black people to live. We are dead last. How do you expect police are gonna help this? How hard police could help our babies be able to come to school without a fight-or-flight mentality? They can't even begin to have an open mind to soak in information because they are fighting for their lives. I have hair now and this doesn't look like a lot, but when I pulled my babies out of school three months ago, my hair started growing back. I was so anxious and worried that my baby's eight years old and had a panic attack, they were gonna call the police on her. I was in fight-or-flight every day I dropped my kids off at school because I didn't believe you guys are keeping my kids safe. You're not keeping me safe. My hair fell out of my goddamn head because my babies weren't safe. You're failing. And if you go home tonight while you drink your cocktails and look at your white kids and you don't see all these faces, somehow who knows, somebody who has been hurt by our schools, if you don't go home and think about what power position you're in and not do something about that, that thirty thousand dollars on cops, how do you expect these kids to learn with police in their face? Do you want a fucking police officer in your face every day waiting for you to mess up so they have an excuse and a reason to pay their rent? Fail it and you all have a choice to make. Make the right one.
All right, so I want to talk about the metal detectors. I'm from Milwaukee and we have metal detectors in Milwaukee Public Districts. And the experience was shit because we woke up from six to six-thirty AM to catch our bus, right? And then to be lined up and stuffed into the cafeteria with metal detectors we're trying to be set. So we had to wait in the cafeteria until the fucking metal detectors were set. We were imprisoned in our cafeteria. Every day, we went through the metal detectors. Every day, we felt like prisoners. And out of all the checks, who do you think got checked the most? Or who do you think got checked the most? Black students were the targets of metal detectors. Anyways, the white students never got checked. Never! Never! If you vote for metal detectors, you better not say it's for safety because everyone felt unsafe when they had metal detectors to go through every day. And to be honest, just say you fear black people and you feel threatened by blacks children. You do not care about blacks children's safety. Because when we went through those metal detectors, we didn't feel safe at all. You got black youth and Southeast Asian youth from Madison coming here at every meeting telling you what they need and you keep dismissing them and then you vote for the fucking, um, the police to be in the schools and then you want to add metal detectors? That makes no sense. This is enough evidence to tell us you fear, you hate, and you want the death and violence of blacks children. So just say it. Stop saying that you want the safety because that is not the truth.
It is truly appalling that this school board continues to spend money and direct efforts to systems that have proven more damaging than helpful to their students. It is clear that you have the funds and efforts to positively influence the educational experiences of your students, yet you do not. Instead of continuing to fund the moralless criminalization of young blacks and brown children, invest in their education. Provide services that will help promote students' leadership. Provide services that will better students' mental health and wellness. Provide services that will invest in their creativity. Instead of spending money on maintaining the threatening and violent presence of police officers in your schools, invest in your students. It is your duty as the representatives of this district to invest in your students.
That's the end of public appearances. The board will be taking a short recess.
Oh, hey, y'all gotta wait. How are y'all looking up there?
Okay, TJ, should I start?
We're on. No, I'm just saying, um, we're coming back into session. Now you can start.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the report on items that proceeded through the instruction work group held on February eleventh, uh, two thousand nineteen.
I'd like to move that we take item twelve-one, Swan Creek petition, out of order.
Okay, uh, any discussion on that?
I'd like to hear from legal counsel just, um, about basic understanding of the limits of our current agreement, um, and...
TJ, do we have to take a vote to take it out of order?
Oh, do we have to take a vote out of order? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mistake. My mistake.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I lost my Roberts.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so with regard to the Swan Creek petition, um, as many of the speakers mentioned tonight, uh, this is subject to a boundary agreement entered into between the Oregon School District and the MMSD. Uh, when it was originally entered into, uh, there was multiple purposes. Uh, one was to increase enrollment in the MMSD, but also, um, and I would say this has certainly worked for the School District of Oregon, it was to stave off, uh, having to build new schools and referenda. Um, and they hadn't had a referenda. I don't believe they've had multiple referenda as they had in the past after that Swan Creek detachment. Um, again, as was stated by a number of the speakers and is included in your packet, um, there is a clause within the agreement that we, um, basically have to oppose any attempt to, um, annex or detach the property under chapter one seventeen, which is what has occurred here with the petition. Uh, my understanding is, um, Oregon is also aware of that provision and will comply with it. And while I don't know the results of their board meeting, they were meeting tonight as well. Um, they did send an indication that they would be voting no, um, because of the, the legal obligation. So in addition to the legal obligation, I think, um, from Madison's perspective, it is a territory that provides us with about two million dollars in property taxes, uh, on an annual basis. Uh, at this time, of the public school students who live in Swan Creek, and I can only speak to the public school students because we don't have great data on private school students, but of the public school students, uh, the majority, around sixty to sixty-five percent, do continue to attend MMSD. Uh, the remaining students, um, most of them, I believe, open and roll out to, uh, Oregon School District. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, its location, um, can, can we put the map up on the board?
Just some people's packets?
Yes. Yep, yeah.
Do people have specific questions on the, on the boundaries? There is a map in your, in your materials. Okay, let's move along.
Okay. Um, so, uh, my, certainly my recommendation, um, based upon all the statutory factors that were required to consider, um, those being the educational needs of the children in the, the district, um, topographical characteristics of the territory, uh, the travel time is a factor to be considered. And, and travel time is really, particularly right now, uh, travel time is, um, fairly consistent between districts. There's no significant travel time to one district versus the other. Um, if there's any adverse effect on programmatic issues, which I do see that happening within Leopold, particularly for the DLI program, um, there's also a significant impact, uh, based upon the fact that the Swan Creek neighborhood is, um, a middle to upper-class neighborhood, um, and almost entirely white. Um, that would have a significant impact on Leopold in particular in terms of the socioeconomic balance as well, as well as racial diversity of Leopold. So, uh, in most instances, um, it's, it's a negative for the Madison Metropolitan School District to, to have this territory be detached. Barb, can you go to, I think it's the last exhibit? Uh, I'm sorry. Um, further, there we go. So this is the Swan Creek territory, this area right here. Um, this area that states capital state recreation area, um, it, it is true, it's DNR, but it is also MMSD. And so when, back when there was an appeal in two thousand two, the School District Boundary Appeal Board determined that the fact that there was a corner shared between MMSD property and the Swan Creek, that led to, uh, contiguous property. So they did not believe that it created an island, um, even though, uh, so this territory here, this territory here, and this territory here, did I, what happened there? Would be Oregon, uh, Oregon School District. Sorry. So the white area here, Oregon School District, this upper area, Oregon School District, and then again, the contiguous corner between Swan Creek. MMSD would be, uh, over in this area, this entire area here. And just so those, um, that aren't particularly familiar with Pittsburgh, this would be Pro-Mega, um, a Grace, um, primarily commercial property, uh, in this area here. Any other questions?
Just one quick question, which is, um, if, uh, if in the scenario that some people described, which-
I think we should. I don't have the language.
Give it a minute. Just give it a minute.
To, to move. Are we ready for a vote on this? On Swan Creek? Is there any further discussion on the Swan Creek area?
No, no further discussion on this.
I'll move that the Board of Education deny the petition to detach the Swan Creek property from the MMSD.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in, uh, am I your advisor vote? All in favor? Showing hands. Opposed? That passes six zero. James, I didn't hear your vote on Swan Creek.
Say that again?
Uh, can you repeat your vote on the Swan Creek detachment?
Uh, nay.
That passes seven zero. Okay, we'll continue with the- I think we should move the meeting.
Can we recess? We can, we can be elsewhere.
I think we recess. We'll take a brief recess. We'll take a brief recess.
Ahmad, your advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven zero. Okay, we'll continue with the...
Ain't no justice in this town. Ain't no justice in this town. Mama, mama, can't you see? Mama, mama, can't you see?
I think we should move the meeting.
What the school has done to me?
Can we recess? We can, we can be elsewhere.
I believe that we will win. I believe that we will win. I believe that we will win.
I'm happy to recess. We'll take a brief recess.
I believe that we will win. I believe that we will win. I believe that we will win.
Hey, whoever's responsible, I'm really happy to see the bounce back thing on there. Armando, I didn't even see you here. I didn't even see you there. Armando, I'm really happy to see the box back on there. And, and, and you feel Rainbow Project is going to have the capacity to serve these schools? Because that's a, that's like a, that's like boom, 14 right away, right? I mean, but you're confident that they're going to have the capacity, that clinical, close, and, and all that? Because that was one concern, because that's, that's big. Um, cool. But I'm really happy to see those things. And, you know, if this is a more normal meeting, I'd call it out as the course of the meeting. Um, because it is, you know, I mean, people are calling for mental health services schools. We're doing the, maybe we're not doing the best we can, but we're doing, we're doing. We're doing. So, cool. Um, and Catholic Charities feels they have the capacity also to add six schools?
Um, yes, yes, they do. It's a great complementary to the CHS.
Right, right. And, and it's going to, and probably something like six or seven families versus ones.
Kind of a little bit less. Correct, that's true. They're ranging between four and six.
Okay.
Uh, kids are...
Families, I mean, because we meant this is, you know, I mean, it's not just...
Yeah, thank you.
Right, right, okay. So, anyway.
Yeah, so it's a great initiative to get it into part of, part of...
Good work. Did we approach Rainbow Project?
We'll call the meeting for the next item on the agenda. Is the report items that proceeded through the instruction work group held on February 2019?
Okay. We had three significant updates. And just to be clear, they were really updates because each item, English language learners, special ed, and advanced learning really deserve a meeting all on their own, which we will get down the line. So, there's updates where essentially, this is what we're working on, and we're going to get full reports down the line. Monday coming up, we're going to be talking about opportunity youth. And I requested specifically information on how we're going to expand these opportunities in, to, and increase the number of slots. So, that's what's coming up on Monday.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Next item is the report on items that proceeded through the operations work group held on February 18th, 2019. Kate?
Yep. So, we had two different items on the agenda on March 11th. The first was an update on budget. That will be a standing item on the ops work group through the rest of the year. And, and then the second was the two policy items that we're going to vote on later tonight. One is on welfare and our emergency procedures. And then the second one was on screenings. Our next meeting is March 11th, and we have two items on that agenda, two or three. Um, budget is, is on there, particularly focused on our priority actions and kind of the first probably more fleshed out view that we'll see there. Um, and then we have Capitol High and, and one more policy piece, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is the action items that proceeded through the operations work group, since there were no action items that proceeded through the instruction work group. And so, that is with regards to revisions to Board Policies 4400 and 4147 relative to safety. So, these have been discussed at the operations work group. And so, I will move that the Board of Education approve the changes to Board Policies 4400, which is investigation, interrogation, arrest, and search. And 4147, students, employees/safety as set forth in the documents provided for the February 25th, 2019, regular Board of Education meeting effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, so, discussion?
Brief, I hope.
Jim, TJ?
Number of people tonight brought up the issue of metal detecting and wanding that's in this policy. And I'd like to just clarify a couple of things, both for the board and for myself. My understanding is that if we do not add this language to this policy, wanding could still go on in our schools and with no guidelines and no protections. Sorry, Matt. I'm looking at you and you don't have a microphone.
Yeah, that's accurate. That's one of the reasons why I believe the board requested the policy is that if, if we're going to do it at any point in time, we want to have some parameters and protections for students. And so, you're, you're correct that if we were to do it without a policy, that would be against kind of the guidance that I've given in terms of metal detectors.
And then, then just to be clear, that there would be an option, the board could pass a policy that said that we would not metal, we would not use metal detectors at all. That would be a third option.
Sure.
And, and, and so, and so, so, um, if we are accepting that there will be metal detectors, then the idea of having, what we're trying to do is put protections in for our students and, and through, through this policy.
Correct, yep.
Thank you. And I just also want to point out in 4400 that additional protections and expansions of, of the current protections for students from searches and investigations have been added to that policy. And some of those are based on the recommendations of the ERO ad hoc committee. And so, thank those people for that work also. And since we're doing all three at once, the employee safety, again, I also thank the EAs at La Follette for their work on bringing the issue of the need for safety protocols for our employees forth. And how that has been incorporated. And thank the board for incorporating that in the policy.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions?
I mean, maybe while we're thanking folks, Matt, I'm just going to thank you on this one.
Oh, yeah, thank Matt too.
I think, I mean, look, I think while obviously a policy is very complex around wanding or any sort of screening, that I'm really happy that you made that effort to talk to folks around what's the right way for us to handle LGBTQ youth, handle gender issues, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I just, I think it's, we're doing quite a, I appreciate the energy, I guess, that you put into helping us in terms of bringing the best possible we could for this type of thing, so.
Ahmad, your advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. So, I will move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all the motions set forth in Section 10, the electronic agenda prepared for the February 25th, 2019, regular school board meeting. Exactly as said, motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby, subject to any express separations that have been made by any member of the school board.
Second.
Okay. Any separations? TJ?
8-8 and 8-15.
Okay. Uh, any others? Okay, then, so, back to the, the main motion. We have a motion and a second, two separations. Ahmad, your advisor vote?
Aye.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. Okay, so, 8-8, agreement with the City of Madison for special duty officers. Ahmad, TJ?
Yeah, this is probably just for questions, and I'm guessing that it's probably Karen. But I'm not 100% sure, and we're going to have to get Karen a microphone.
Yep.
These officers are primarily for things like sporting events and dances and, and other ones. They're not for day-to-day school day activities. My, the question I have, the big question is, and Joe, Joe's here too, is what's the chain of command on approval for, for hiring these officers? Is it the person who controls the budget line, or does it have to go up to your levels before it's approved?
It's generally at the school level. And it's pretty routine. For instance, a football game on a Friday night at Mansfield or Breeze Stadium, it's usually just two officers. Basketball games is two officers. Homecoming dances, I mean, the whole array of extracurricular, extracurricular school-sponsored activities. But it's pretty routine. It's usually a couple of officers. If we're expecting a great big crowd, we may add some extra staff.
Is there back and forth with either of your officers when, when these are done? Or, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to look at how it happens.
I mean, there's dozens, not hundreds of...
Right, no, it happens all the time, yeah.
Right, dances and everything like that. But if there's information that comes forward that there's a concern about, absolutely, the schools. And Jeremy, the athletic director, will too.
And then I guess the last question is that the expenditures for these come out of the individual program budgets?
The school budgets?
The school budgets, or if it's, if it's an MSCR thing, it would come out of an MSCR activity budget?
You can clarify that. We haven't gone line by line item on that, so.
Yeah, I, you know, just, just, you know, kind of trying to get, I mean, I knew this was going on. I just didn't have a feel of kind of the flow, the workflow around it. And since it was on the agenda, this seemed like a good time to ask some questions. All right, thanks, thanks.
Mary, I'm going to have to recuse myself.
Yeah. Thanks, Gloria. Okay, so then I will move that the board approve entering into recurring annual contracts with the City of Madison for payment of special duty police officers to be assigned on an as-needed and as-available basis to provide safety, security, and crowd management at school events. The payments will be made from the requesting schools' operating funds with the total from all schools not to exceed $30,000 in any given school year, during any given year.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Ahmad, your advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-01. Okay, 8-15.
8-15. We have approximately $3 million worth of school hardening and related technological purchases on the agenda this evening. Approximately 2.25 million of that is from DOJ grant funds. And approximately $775,000 of it is from local funds, either TID or, or Fund 10 or related funds, Fund 41. I'm not quite sure which, which local funds. I kind of went through all these, and I think in general, these investments are excessive. I understand that spending the DOJ grants for what the DOJ grants are is, is, is what we should be doing. I picked out 8-15 as the one which has $379,000 worth of local expenditures in it as one that I will be voting against. And so, I'm not going to try to convince anyone else to vote against it, but I will be voting against this. And with the idea that we should, you know, that definitely spend the DOJ grants, but we should be very, very careful with our local investments in this area, so.
Joan, do you have any, so what would happen if those funds aren't spent?
TJ knows that we budgeted for this.
Yeah.
This was, this is all what we planned on in the June budget. And so, I appreciate the reminder that you didn't love that idea in the first place. But this is the commitment we made to the public. We're not expanding that plan in any way. We're just following through on the plan that was created.
And the plan being the security?
Yeah.
The security plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any further questions or discussion? Okay, I'll move that the Board of Education award Tri-City Electric of Iowa a bid in the amount of $360,145 for Contract A. And Fearing's Auto, Audio/Video Security, a bid in the amount of $331,160 for Contract B, for a total of $691,305 to complete Phase 3 facility security improvements at select schools using the Department of Justice grant of $311,783.38 and 2018-19 local security funds of $379,521.65.
Second.
Okay, Ahmad, your advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes 5-2. Okay, so that completes the consent agenda. And the next item would be other reports to the board, starting with the City of Madison Education Committee.
We finally had quorum.
Wow.
Let me pull up my notes that Michelle also took and forwarded me, but I'm just thrilled. We have quorum, we saved the committee, both of which I consider major accomplishments because there was strong, at one point, strong consensus that it wouldn't be. What we're going to do, meetings will be held in May, July, and September. The next meeting is May 8th. We're also creating a survey. It's sent together, sending it out now to ask individuals what they want the committee to do, what they think is the most important, and to rank them. We're also asking, what role do they see the City Education Committee take on? What should be the City of, City Education Committee? And what should, what, and what, who should vote and who should be on the committee? Should the committee be formalized in the respectful guidelines of government? Because the city doesn't have to notice it, only the school board has to notice it. And the city would like to notice it. And what should the city and school board do? Sorry, I'm trying to read this. I, school board do to work on routine-related issues and problems in the, of, of restorative youth, of opportunity youth? And that is it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just more or less thrilled that it happened.
Mary?
Yeah.
I'm glad that the committee is asking these questions because I can, I consider this committee to be pretty useless as it is right now. And I think a much higher level discussion needs to be made. If two board members are at a commit, are in, are at a, on a committee with two county, uh, city leaders and two county board supervisors, I think we're missing an opportunity, and the, and the conversation that goes on is really worthless, unless it's higher level. And, and the types of questions that were being asked here gives us an opportunity to perhaps consider a much higher level discussion among all three governing bodies in this community, where we can actually talk about sharing resources and creating partnerships that are budget, that are attached to budgets, that, that bring meaningful discussion about how we can deal with restorative justice practice, how we can deal with opportunity use, and collaborate with governing agencies that takes our kids that we work with here during 8 to 3, and then hand off to city and county programs that can help, that can continue and collaborate together. So, that's where I see this City Education Committee really needs to go. And I don't even know if it needs to be called the City Education Committee. It needs to be, what we need to be considered is how can we collaborate at much higher levels with city and county governing agencies to collaborate on programs that we can then share resources, share conversations, and share budgets? That, to me, is something that I think it would be worthwhile to consider. And at that meeting, to board, I think the president and vice president of the City Council and the chair of the county board should be there along with super, uh, either the superintendent or, or the chief of staff, and someone from the mayor's office and someone from the county exec office, if not the mayor and county exec themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. I, I do want to make sure we stick to the agenda here. And this is an update from the meeting. I think these are really good points. And I think we should not get on the topic of discussing this.
I'll hold on.
I, I think it's a relevant topic. I just don't think it's part of getting an update.
I wanted it on the table.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And we've agreed to...
This is, this is relevant to the update. Nikki, who is the survey being sent to?
Survey is being sent to current committee members, individ, they're being sent to teachers, they're being sent to staff, they are being sent to county board members, the county board executive. Jan, you should get one as superintendent. All of, all school board members are getting one as superintendent.
And all common, all, all those, okay, thank you. That's, that was, thanks, Nikki.
And Dean, I think it'd be good if you could maybe put in writing your things so we don't lose that. And that can be incorporated into the feedback on the next, including that from the survey.
And as a reminder, we did agree to agendize a larger discussion about the City Ed Committee
Oh, great.
later on this year.
I'll do that.
Oh, great.
Can we include the early childhood education one in that, or no? I mean, you guys could discuss it, but just the, the early childhood education committee.
Oh, we certainly could consider it.
I mean, it's the same, there, one covers birth to, really, some of it's like five, six, seven even.
Okay. Okay, so, next, Ahmad, is Student Senate?
Um, so, Student Senate had a meeting on February 13th. And then during that meeting, we had a discussion around the BEP, similar to during the instruction work group. We especially highlighted the three goals and had a discussion around them. And, as well as dress code, because a lot of the students were passionate about some of the items in the dress code and had things to say about those. We also began working on presentations in our committees. So, we have an AP honors committee, facilities, class sizes, and info and technology are four committees. And we began working on presentations so that we can hopefully present to the Student Senate as a whole next meeting, and possibly the board in the future. And then we will likely have another round of guest speakers this spring just to gather more information and streamline our goals for this year and next year.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, is there a question?
Sure.
Matt, is there anything on the BEP that, can you bring anything from the Board of Education? Are there changes that, that there was a consensus among the Student Senate around from our last draft? And if so, if you can share them, the board either at, at our next meeting or wherever, that would be appreciated.
I can share them electronically also. I have...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Gloria, Student Behavior Ad Hoc Committee?
Sure. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 11th, that, our ad hoc committee. So, we've had, you know, we've made a lot of progress. We're moving along. As everybody knows, this is a really tough area. And I think we've covered a lot of groundwork here. In our next meeting, we will be discussing how we incorporate opportunity youth in the recommendations and policies and budget, really focusing on those students who are high needs in our schools. Oftentimes, we build policies for, which, you know, we have to, right, for the entire student body. And, but I think we have to, this is an opportunity for us to really focus our efforts around those students who are in need of a lot of resources so that we are not leaving them behind and figure out a way that we support them, whether it be alternative schools, whatever that looks like. But I think we have to spend some time and energy around that. So, I appreciate our staff in listening to our concerns. And that's what we'll be discussing further. We wanted to be further along on this, but I think it is worth our time and spending, our time on this. And I don't care, James, if you guys have any comments.
Okay, Nikki?
Just one quick, one comment, one statement. Thank you for including that. I think that's very important. But just one reminder that, on the alternatives, that when you do an alternative, you have to have 10 day, 10 days' notice or it constitutes a change of placement. We had that with the alternative school, La Follette, and it wasn't done. And we ended up almost having to give compensatory services. And so, I just want to avoid that problem.
So, that'll be great for our next meeting of the, that'll be covering that. We didn't, last month, we neglected to get an update from the state meeting of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And James, I wondered if you could give us an update from that meeting?
Uh, based from that meeting, um, wow, can I remember that meeting now? Yeah, we had, I believe we had, um...
This is old or new business.
We had three recommendations, I believe, and, um, I'm trying to remember those now. But it was, um, none of them passed because the ones that were basically, um...
Wow.
Which is better, last year.
Had to do with police in schools, and I don't remember the exact wording of the resolution at this point. But basically, it was the southern schools and, that were in favor of the changes that we recommended. And as you know, that, out of about 300 people that's in those meetings, that, that constituted about three people. We were thoroughly outvoted in terms of making those changes. And I don't remember the specific changes, I forget, um, the resolution. But they did not pass the ones of the changes we had towards police. Well, if I do have to do this, I would look back at that. Because I can't remember the exact resolutions now, at least if it's not 15-hour, I can't remember them.
We can, we can revisit it next, next month, James. I should have given you a fair warning that I was going to call on you here, so.
I can't remember what they were, but I know there were three of them. And, but, but what I do remember is that we argued for them very strongly, but we were outvoted.
Thank you for trying.
Yeah, thank you, James. Okay, so, I think that is the last item on our agenda since we did move up the Swan Creek. And so, if there is no other old or new business, I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ahmad, your advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.